Good evening, everyone. We're going to resume the meeting at 6:35. We've got the same board members present. Before we went into closed session, we had a public comment, but we're going to reopen public comment. We have some public here. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? We're going to go with comments, public comments on agenda items or not on the agenda. And when we address the agenda items, we'll have some type of public to discuss. Anyone?
My name is Andrew Sandoval. My name is Andrew Sandoval. And I'm here in the fourth floor of the office. And I'm just here to ask if the board and the administration would consider meeting with me and parents. I've already tried to email for you guys, and you guys said that you guys weren't going to meet with us to address any of the issues. So I'm just here to request that again. And I've provided you guys a binder of something that MCOB sent, Alacel, to help facilitate oversight. So that's a really good checklist on how to go through each particular item and the requirements to fulfill like that. So I just wanted to give you guys that. Also includes a letter from the Monitoring and Housing Office of the Education. And I appreciate that you guys are going to let us address agenda items, because I just received a letter from you guys' lawyer saying that you guys are not. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Hi, my name is Wes White. I'm a community enthusiast and resident of Salinas. And I'm curious, and I sent an email asking about the $85 an hour tech charge, if that was still in effect or not. And I guess I'm still awaiting a response. It really disappoints me, and it should be made free and available to the public, anybody interested. It's almost like, what do you got to hide? And that's what really scares me and concerns me. It should be free. I mean, we did this thing with this latest elementary school district, and back in 2014, building a better board. And you know, you see improvement that can be done, and that's all we really want. We just want to see as much money go into the kids as possible. We don't need to be seeing parents or teachers being charged for this. You know, it just doesn't make sense. So I mean, I'd rather it be free, and then I could just walk away. I don't have to be around anymore. I mean, that's all that I thought I was done last month, when I seen these cameras. And that's heartbreaking, because I'm like, cool, you know, but it doesn't seem to be going this way. I'm getting roadblocks and brick walls, and it's not appropriate. I mean, it should be an open conversation. It shouldn't be like, what is this? I don't even get it. I mean, where's the communication in this? Are we having a dialogue here, or are you all just making decisions, and nobody else is invited? That's what concerns me, and that's why I wish this was free.
Great comment. Anyone else from the public? Okay, thank you. Report from the closed session? There's nothing to report from the closed session. One thing that I didn't discuss is that we have, we're part of now the Welling Waste Not program, and we're trying to reduce waste of coffee, paper for some of these agenda items. And so in front of you, you have a laptop that has all of the documents that are going to be discussed tonight, so that you can follow while we're following through the agenda, and hopefully not waste where we don't have to waste. Let's move on to the next item, point one, the adoption of the agenda. Everyone get to look at the agenda, and everybody for...
I've looked at the agenda, and I think that we adopted it.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Second, menorah. All those in favor to adopt the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. The next one is an action item on the minutes from the November 28th and December 12th meetings. Can everyone get an opportunity to look and review those minutes? Okay? Undertain a motion to get those approved.
Awesome.
Over mic. And can I get a second? All those in favor approving the minutes for November 28th and December 12th, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
In your position, pass unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to our business services and presentations. Item, agenda item 5.1, financial reports for November, December of 2017. Are we getting Donna on the phones for those?
Yes. Donna, are you there?
I am here.
Hello, Donna.
Hello.
Augustina, the rest of the board here. We're ready for you.
Okay, so what statements do you have in front of you right now?
First thing we have is the cash flow worksheet.
Okay, for November or December? Do you want to just go over the December statements, or do you want to go over each of them separately, November and December?
So November, we have November 1st.
Okay, all right. So now, what order did you want to go in? You have the income statement, the balance sheet, and the cash flow?
Yeah, the first one, just because everyone is following us electronically, everyone should have the cash flow worksheet as the first item.
Okay.
Correct?
Okay.
I know it's kind of backwards than what we...
Yeah, kind of backwards, so let me think about this.
Okay, I mean, or we can scroll. We can scroll to the balance sheet first. If you prefer the balance sheet first, we'll start with the balance sheet.
Normally, we do the balance sheet, then the income statement, and the cash flow is...
The cash flow is the very end, right.
Normally that.
Right, so let's do the balance sheet then. November 30th.
Okay.
Thank you.
So for the balance sheet, cash in all bank accounts at the end of November is $1,105,404. The accounts receivable listed just below that is $774.53, that, the Michael Roberts medical that he pays every month. So we book it, the bill is paid, and then he pays it back. So that zeroes out. The employee receivables, the receivables, the one that's employee receivable, that would be, let's see, let me see what that in the form. Oh, okay. That's the balance of an advance that will be paid by June for that one. The employee receivable, summer 125, that is the July premium that the school pays while the employees are out, and then the employees pay it back over the course of the year. So that will be paid in full by June 30th. The due from grant to government IDEA, that's the federal IDEA funding, is always made. I just communicated with the Sanoma Delta recently, and they still haven't received it. So as soon as they get it, they will forward it on to OAGES. But Deborah suggested that quickly it should be brought back, and by May or so of this year. The prepaid expenses, I don't know if she put it out. That's the $14,000 there that we're showing, like the prepaid. $12,114 of that are the lease deposit and utility deposits. The rest of it is staff development, that will extend in January. Advertising, that will extend in September of '18, and then an overpayment, looks like on card number, that's going to be extended in February. And then the other one below that, the 825, that's a field trip, that will be extended in March. Those are all just expenses that are just, they were prepaid before the fact, and then as the months come up, that they should be extended and will extend them out. On the liability side, those are all just payroll liabilities. The 1600 payable, that's the summer pay that the school is holding for the employees, and will be paid out in July. The health premium, the panel is showing the debit for the 15987, that means that that is the December invoices that were paid in November, and they will be expensed out in December. Do you have any questions on the balance sheet?
Any questions from the board?
Donna, what is the last one in that current liability is the suspense clearing?
That is for, there was some charges on Rabel Bank that was figured out with Rabel Bank. Yeah, Kim's got a note on here that I guess Juanita needs to go to the bank or get this cleared up. Juanita, do you remember what this is all about? There were, it says, you were sent a detailed letter to fix credit card issues. Do you remember any of this, Juanita?
No. Can anyone hand it back?
I can tell you it's with Rabel Bank. You know, I don't work personally with the way it's been more, so I have to ask Kim and Katie what the exact particulars are, but I do remember them talking to me about there were fraudulent charges that had to be reversed.
Yes, oh, there you go. Okay, yes, Donna, this had to do with some fraudulent charges made to the account iTunes, I believe. There were quite a few charges there, and we immediately caught it, and they issued a new card, and Rabel Bank is going to help us with that. So it has to do with YouTube iTunes charges.
I'm making a note for myself. I'm going to talk to Kim and Katie about this tomorrow, and make sure they get this cleared up before next reporting. Because I'm not sure where it is at this point, but I will find out, and we'll have it cleared up on where it is at, before the January reporting. So I can tell you more about that when we get it cleared up, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
No?
No, Donna, let's move forward, please.
Do you want to move on to the income statement?
Let me ask the board members if there are any questions about, because we're going to get the report for December, which kind of supersedes the November one.
Right.
So if there are any questions from the board on any of the income statements? Because we're going to get a report for December's income statement, that will pretty much supersede this one, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I would think at this point, you might want to just go over the balance sheet for December, and then the income statement and cash flow for December, because those will incorporate November.
Right, I agree with you. Do the board have any thoughts with that? Okay, let's move forward with that, Donna. Thank you.
Okay, sure. All right, then we have to move on to December. You have the balance sheet there?
Yes, everyone should have, should have. No, keep going. There it is. So it ends December 31st, 2017. Okay, I believe everyone has it in front of them now.
Okay, so at the end of December, cash in all accounts is $994,410. And everything below that is basically the same as we just discussed for November. So again, the receivables for Mike Roberts, he pays that every month, so that would be, get zeroed out every month, and the two employee receivables will be zeroed out by June 30th. Okay, on the payables side of it, there's really nothing. It's all just normal payroll liabilities, with the exception of that suspense clearing that we will find out about.
Any questions from the board?
Any questions?
No, Donna, let's move to, are we doing the income statement?
The income statement?
Yes.
Okay. So Kim always goes through this, and lets me know if there's anything that looks out of place. For your revenues, all of your state and federal revenues, those are all on target. Nothing is behind right now. Your local revenues, as you can see, the donations are, you've received more donations and other local revenues than were budgeted. So we'll pick up those in second interim. When we do the second interim revision, we'll increase the budget to cover what you've received. For your expenses, move on to the expenses. Your teacher salaries and principal salaries are right, they are about the percentage that they should be right now. Principals are right on, teachers are very close. Let's see, you're at... Yeah, you should be about 45%. So you're just a little bit under at 43%, nothing bad there. Your classified sex salaries are also very close to the budget at 46%. Health and welfare, same thing at 47%, it's still pretty close. What's costing it to you a little bit over is your DUI charge. Those are, because the school belongs to the school employee fund, or insurance, or unemployment insurance. You have your regular charge for every payroll, which is very, very low, it's only 0.05%. But then, when employees draw off of that fund, then the school has to pay what's called a DUI, local experience charge. So that's what the bulk of those charges are at this point, is those are charges that are happening to be paid for terminated employees. Your bulletin supplies look good. I mean, at this point, you still have $60,000 left in the budget for those items, and nothing is over budget at this point. Let's see, services and operating costs? You're a little bit over budget in dues and membership that will have to cover at first interim. Everything else looks good. On your professional services, you're over budget on your service contract, your technology contracts are a bit over budget now, $10,000 worth. And then we added this staff development expense board, because the board retreat was, we just felt for the cost of the board retreat, that it probably should be separated out, rather than just lumped into other services. We set up an actual account, staff development board, and we'll cover that in the budget when we do the second interim. But that was $11,582 that you're over budget. Let's see, site and improvement of site, yeah, those are quite a bit over at $42,000, quite a bit more than what's budgeted. Do you want to address that, Juanita? Let's see, I'm going to get into your actual file, into your accounting system. It'll be a tiny comparison to see just exactly what that was. Oh, site and improvement of site, NFT 3, the 37980.
That's the playground. That's the new playground.
Oh, that's the new playground?
That's the deposit, that's 50% of the deposit.
Well, that's actually, okay, I want them to, I don't want to move that. That should be under capalicus equipment. Is that playground, Juanita, is it all in one piece, or is it stationary, fixed to ground?
It's in pieces that will be put together in one piece.
Okay, but it's going to be taken apart?
No, it cannot be taken apart.
It cannot be taken apart. So if you ever let that site ever stay?
It will be installed, and it will need to stay wherever it's going to be installed. So it's not going to be portable, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. I just want to make sure we're putting it in the right place.
Stationary.
If you can't move it, if it's a fixed structure, then we want to leave it there.
It's a fixed structure, actual structure.
But I guess we want to move budgets, because I think that $120,000 is budgeted. Isn't that for the playground equipment, Juanita?
That is correct. $120,000 for the playground, $100,000 for the play structure.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It's $100,000 for the play structure, but $30,000, $33,000 about is for the removal and installation, and about $70,000 for the actual structure itself. Can you hear me, Donna? Did you hear that?
Well, then we're going to need to go over these when we break on the second interim, and I'll have you give me a detailed listing, Juanita, and we'll make sure we've got these budgeted correctly.
Okay, sounds good. And the other 20 was more for permits and professional services, to get the permit through the City of Salinas, building the planning department.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you, Juanita.
I said that the other 20, I'll give you a breakdown when we discuss it, but the other 20 was for professional services, as well as for...
We're actually working on the salary worksheet for the budget right now, this week, and I hope to have them out to you by the end of this week. And then we can start working on the next second interim budget, okay?
Okay.
Are there any questions on the income statement?
The only one I had was the 859%, but that's already taken care of, so.
Okay.
Those are percentages?
And are there, I'm sorry, did I hear that? Is that a question, or did you say it was taken care of?
You took care of it. You took care of it.
Okay, okay. All right, so no other questions there?
No. No, thank you. No, Donna, let's proceed.
The cash flow statement?
For December, correct?
What we're showing on the cash flow statement, then, which would agree with the balance sheet, at the end of December, you had $994,410 in all bank accounts. We are projecting, if the school receives all the revenues that are budgeted, and has all the expenses, then all the expenditures that are budgeted, at the end of June, we anticipate, or we're projecting, you'll have $1,094,407 in the bank. And then we're estimating accruals, receivables of about $77,939, and a payable oversight fee of $22,206, and then the $59,400 will need to be paid out for the payroll reserve. After all that's done, we're saying you'll have $1,102,814 in the bank, roughly. Any questions on that?
Any questions? No questions, Donna.
No, okay. So do you have any questions about anything that you would like to discuss?
Any questions from board members? No, there are no questions, Donna.
Okay, so I'm sure you've heard me, Juanita, we're getting the second interim budget master ready this week. We anticipate having it ready by the end of the week. We'll give it out to Juanita next week, and then Juanita and I will start working on the budget. You know, we'll have phone conversations and email conversations, and work on the revise. When is your February board meeting?
It's usually at the end of the month.
The 27th? The 27th?
Yes.
Okay, so Juanita, you and I are going to want to get this done, so that you can present it for approval at the 27th board meeting, okay?
Is that the second interim financial report you're referring to?
Yeah, we'll want to review the second interim with the board, and let them review it and approve it, or revise it, whatever the case may be.
Approve, okay, by the February meeting?
Yes, we'll get it ready, I'd like to have it ready before the February meeting, at least a week before, so you can, you know, publish that you're going to have it in the board meeting for approval.
Okay, understood, yeah.
So I'll get together with you, Juanita, you know, when I send that out to you, then you and I can have a discussion and decide when you'll have time to go over it and what changes you might make. I know there's going to be the big change to the revenue, so that's going to kind of trickle down and have to affect other things also.
Okay. Any other questions for Donna on the board? Okay, thank you, Donna, for your report.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Good evening. Okay, let's move on to item 5.2. We're going to get an audit report from our auditors. Is he calling in also?
No, she's sort of...
Perfect. Perfect.
So it's... It's not on it? The audit report?
Oh, here it is. Okay, it's right after. There you go.
Hello, Wade. This is Augustine Vargas, board president. Your mentioned item is up, so we're with... Can you finish your report?
Okay, great. I wanted to question, besides the audit report, were you able to obtain the required communications letter that goes along with that? Or is that something I can just go over with you orally?
Is it?
You can go over with it orally. I...
Okay. That's fine. What I'll do is I'll go over it orally, and if you have any questions, please give me a call and I'll stop and then try to answer your question, and then we can proceed with looking at the audit report after the required communications. So what we did in October, when we sent... Well, actually, probably in November, when we sent the final report out, we also sent a letter that was a... That provided required communications to the board, and I'll go over those things right now. What it does is it just lays out the responsibilities of both the auditor and management in the context of the audit, and it provides some significant audit findings related to the process of the audit. So I'll go through that first. One is... The first one is the qualitative aspects of accounting practices. The fact that management is responsible for the selection and the use of the appropriate accounting policies within the audit report. And when we look at footnote one of the audit report, when we go to the report itself, that's where the accounting practices are laid out in terms of the accounting policies of the school as it relates to the financial statements. There were no new accounting policies adopted during the year. The application of the existing policies has not changed. There were no transactions entered into the school during the year, which there was a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. And all the significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. The next item is accounting estimates. There are a few accounting estimates that are used in preparation of the financial statements, generally related to the functional expense allocations, also fixed assets, as well as collections of receivables. And all of those are management's responsibility based on their knowledge and experience. And we evaluated the key factors and assumptions used developing those estimates and felt they were reasonable in relation to the financial statements. And then in terms of disclosures, we've found that there were no particularly sensitive financial disclosures, and the financial statement disclosures were neutral, consistent, and clear. The next set of communications relates to difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We found that we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management and the performance of our audit. Uncorrected or corrected misstatements were required to accumulate all the misstatements that we identified during the audit and communicate them to the board and management. As a result of our audit procedures, we found no adjustments were necessary during the audit. Disagreements with management. Whether or not we resolved them or not, we didn't have any disagreements with management over financial accounting reporting or auditing matters. Financial representations. We have obtained a letter from management that laid out the fact that they had given us everything we asked for, and there were certain other things, such as any outstanding liabilities to be made aware of. They've given us everything that we needed to have. That letter was dated October 25th of 2017, the date of our audit report. And then we discussed a variety of accounting matters and auditing standards with management each year, but they were not a condition of our retention as the school's honor. And then we do have some required... We have some supplementary information in the financial statements, and we subjected those, that information to the same auditing standards that were used in preparation of the financial statements themselves. So that's the required communications. Do you have any questions about that?
Any questions?
I don't.
I want to phrase this the right way. I don't know if you're allowed to comment. Is this a consistent pattern you see with the auditing and books in Oasis's history?
Do you mean that the audit was consistent with prior year's experience?
Yes, yes.
Yes, it was very consistent. Over the years, there have been some transactions that were complicated, but in general, any transactions that are complicated, we find out about one in advance and are usually asked to advise ahead of time as to how the transaction should be reported. So that's why normally we don't have any adjustments because we've already discussed this with both management and the outside accounting service provider before the financial statements are submitted to the state in September.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay. So the audited financial statements themselves, we can start on page one. This is our auditor, independent auditor's report. Again, it lays out the responsibilities of the auditor and also the responsibilities of management. The financial statements themselves are management's responsibility. Our responsibility is to render an opinion about the financial statements, whether or not they're presented in accordance with general subject accounting principles. And on page two at the top is our opinion based on our auditing procedures. And this is what we call an unmodified opinion. In other words, there were no adjustments that were needed to be made, nor were there any issues that we found during the course of our audit that made these financial statements stated. So they were fairly presented in all material respects as it relates generally subject to the accounting principles. The other item is the information that is provided in the supplementary information section. And again, those are required statements or required information from the state compliance guide, and we didn't have any issues related to how they were presented as well. Then the last thing on that page two is the fact that we also subject the financial statements to auditing procedures required by governmental auditing standards. And this is like a little bit of a step up from maybe a normal audit of financial statements in which we consider the internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. So that... We'll see that at the back of the audit report. There'll be another letter stating that we did use governmental auditing procedures and if there were any issues. Page three is the balance sheet or the state's financial position. And generally speaking, it's a very healthy balance sheet. Again, your major assets is cash. You do have some receivables from the Fed, the state, government, and then you have property plant equipment that's been capitalized and is being depreciated over the course of its useful life. And again, most of your assets, if not all of them, are considered to be unrestricted net assets. Or those would be essential reserves. If you took out the property plant equipment, those would be your liquid reserves. On page four is the statement of activities of the income statement. As you can see, most of your revenues come from state aid and other governmental funding, and you do have other revenue down at the bottom, which is a whole host of different things that are brought in by the school for various functions, fundraising and/or other ancillary revenues that are coming into the school for... I can't remember if there's daycare or not. I'm thinking airbus, but that's what that revenue is. And then we have expenses, and most of your expenses are going to actual program services. And a good... And that's a good percentage in terms of program services related to... And as it relates to management in general, it's a good ratio to have, whereas currently right now. So overall, the increase in net assets or the profit, if you will, for the year was about $300,000 for the year. On page five, you will see another aspect of what was involved in a change in net assets of 300,000, and that really you can add another $50,000 to that. Depreciation was 50,000. That's a non-cash expense. So operationally, you generate about $255,000 if you take into consideration the changes in your operating assets and liabilities, which is a good amount of cash. And a number of... A lot of that cash has been invested in property plant equipment. So cash position is pretty healthy at the end of the year, $1.2 million. Then on page six, the statement of functional expenses lays out your expenses by natural classification, such as salaries and wages, pension expenses, and so on. Those are the expense categories that eventually your 990 tax return will use to report your activities to the feds, to the federal government and any potential donors. Then on page seven, we get into the notes to the financial statements. As I said before, footnote one is a summary of our significant accounting policies, and they really haven't changed from the prior year. So I can skip to page nine, and this gives you some detail in note three of what your property plant equipment is made up of, mostly of buildings, improvements to buildings and so forth. And you're depreciating that over the useful life of the asset. And we have the employee retirement plan on note four. One thing you'll note there in STIRS is that your contribution rate is going to be increasing and has been increasing for the last couple of years. It's going to increase all the way up to about 19% in 2020, 2021. I'm sure you guys are aware of the additional cost related to STIRS. So this lays out where the plan is in terms of the plan and how much it's funded right now. It's 58% funded, so that's why those contributions are increasing to remedy that funding deficit. On page 11, we have your operating lease, and that's... There's one more year or half a year on that. And then we can move on to the required supplementary information that really starts on page 14 in terms of what the state requires you to have. And this is instructional minutes, and you are in compliance with instructional minute requirements. On the next page, this is a schedule of your average daily attendance. This is the number that is used to generate a lot of your funding that you get throughout the year. On page 16 shows you that there were no adjustments between your unaudited actuals report that went into the state in September and the audited financial statements, so there are no differences. And we'll move on to then page 18. As I mentioned before, there's a governmental auditing standards letter. And as a result of those procedures, there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses to report. And then on page 20 is the state report on state compliance, and the procedures that were performed are listed there. And there were no issues related to compliance with the state compliance procedures. So at the end of the report, on page 22 and 23, you'll see that there are no findings for the year. And that's it. That's the audit report.
Board members have any questions for Wade?
Wade, I know that we had to make a correction on page 12 of the report, and that is in reference to the charter petition that was renewed, and there was noted that that had to be updated to the new term of the charter. And once that correction is made, a new copy of this will be forwarded to the county as well as to Alisa. Is that going to be made soon so that we can make that available to the public as well as to the Alisa district and MCOE?
Yeah, I can make that. I was waiting to have the board discuss that and okay that. Yeah, I can do that tomorrow.
I also send you... Matthew made another comment on board membership. I send you the updated board membership list. You might want to ask Matthew how he wants that updated there. Or you might and him decide how that needs to happen.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be able to. If that makes up what you sent me.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Wade, I can't find the page number. Oh, it'd be page 18. It's the last, second to last paragraph. Where is it? No, I'm sorry. It's the last paragraph. I know that in your profession, you just think specifically what you see and what you don't see, perhaps. But the sentence says, "Given these limitations during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses." Does that more or less mean that everything that you saw looked to be just fine and running just fine?
Yes. And what we do every year is there's been occasions, I'm sure, when there's something like either a management estimate was not quite right or there was new information that came to our attention, and it came to management's attention, but it didn't come to our attention because there was no mechanism in their internal control to communicate it, or they didn't catch it for whatever reason. So those are the types of things that are very... They're usually very uncommon, but this is sort of like accountants or auditories for saying, no, this isn't a 100% audit.
Right, right. You can only comment on what you actually see. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Wade, I had asked you when I was reviewing the audit, I had made a note of the kindergarten minutes being more than everybody else's instructional minutes on page, and I just want the board and I to have a refresher on. Page 14, instructional minutes actually required. Instructional minutes for kindergarten. Can you go over that again just once again, please, so that we are clear about how the instructional minutes are calculated for kindergarten? It says required 36,000, actual 6,920. Wade, are you still there? We lost him.
Wade has... He left the car. He should be there.
He's still left.
You're Wade.
Wade? Wade? Is Donna made it back there?
Is that a question that you can answer?
Definitely, yes. He gave me the answer that playtime for kindergarten is counted as instructional time because his minutes and mine minutes were not the same. And so I asked him, why do you have more minutes here? And he said, well, you need to take into account the morning recess that they get, which is 20 minutes a day. So that's why it's more. But we're over the 36,000 required, so.
Thank you, Juanita. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Thank you, Wade. Okay, let's move on to the next item, 5.3, the Oasis Community Council update.
Kat sent me a text saying that she would not be able to make it tonight. So she has to be postponed to the next meeting, yes.
Can I get, just for the record, a motion to postpone item 5.3 to the next meeting?
Oh, yes, yes.
So can I get a second? Okay. 5.3 to the next board meeting. Aye. Thank you. 5.4, Life After School Program Reports.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Priscilla, and I coordinate the after-school program. And this is my fourth year at Oasis.
And then I'm Deanna. This is my, going to be my second year, but there's school year here at Oasis, and I do the billing for after-school.
Okay, so I'm going to start with a brief overview of what we do in the after-school program. Right now, the after-school program has about six staff members, myself, Isella, our cook, Deanna, who does the billing, who introduces herself. And our two new staff members that we currently hired this year, who is Nancy and Claudia. And then last but not least, our former employee, Denny, who has been with us before and is back with us. And he does physical outdoor indoor activities as well. The after-school program runs every day from like around 3:00 to 6:00, except on Wednesdays, which is our minimum days, 12:30 to 6:00. And we have a variety of activities that we plan daily for our students, such as arts and crafts, cooking, science projects, homework help, physical activities and field trips. And we also have teacher Adam, who does after-school with us, and he does a robotics class. And so much more that the students enjoy. The students usually come in right after school. They sign in into the program. They have a healthy snack, and then they have recess and come back in for homework. And they go on with their activities that we planned for the day. Isella is our daily cook. She provides a healthy snack for the students. They'll have snacks such as sandwiches, bagels, soup, salads, et cetera. And it's always served with a side of fruit, milk, or water. Isella does the food shopping weekly, so our food is always fresh and served. Whenever she is out, either myself or Deanna are certified to prep and serve snack as required by our current health permit issued by the Madera County Health Department.
Okay, so usually monthly we bring in between, anywhere between 1,000 to 5,500. The 5,000 is the good one. For the school year 2017, 2018, starting in July, we have earned $36,000 and we have only spent $37,000. This year, a number of students enrolled in the program has like, whoa, it's doubled compared to last year. Last year, we had maybe like 20 to 30 students, and this year it's like 60. We try to provide the best and safe and, most importantly, fun. And we have these students, and we enjoy working with them.
So we try to make it fun for them. I know we're planning our big dance coming up, so I know a lot of parents are excited for that. We fundraise a lot too, to take our students on field trips. And like last year, we had our fun water carnival day that the kids really enjoyed. And it was our first year doing it, so this year is also our first year doing our big someone special dance. And we're really looking forward to that. And also, the parents have been really supportive, so we really appreciate them helping us. We were able also to have a nice winter celebration this past December with our after-school students and their parents. And their parents really enjoyed it and they appreciated it. They want to have more social events so we can all get together. And it's been a great starting year. We're looking forward to the rest of the school year. Do you guys have any questions? Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. It shows here that you say you have earned around 36,000 and spent 37,000? So are we in the red?
We are. Do you want me to answer? Can anyone hear me? On this one? Yeah, okay. No, actually, we're not in the red. What happens is that there are staff members who have children here. They leave their children here and they go home. I don't charge to them. And also, we collect for some families, we collect late or they aren't able to pay on time. And other families, due to their circumstances, we are not able to charge them. So there are families who have special circumstances. And those are like homeless, families that are homeless or foster youth. And those families do not pay. So there is that. But by the end of the year, we break even. So we really have not had major issues on that. There was one year when we had some additional revenue, and they got computers. And so when we have additional revenue, it goes right back to the program and we buy whatever's necessary. We keep the program fun, exciting, safe, and in compliance with the health department.
To what do you attribute the tremendous growth this year versus others? Wait. You just, the news got out about the program?
I don't know. I guess this year more parents needed like the program, I guess. But also, I guess, last year, I mean, thanks to Deanna as well. She's been like really helpful, like planning a lot of the events. So, you know, I also couldn't have done it without her. But she has, we have planned a lot of like, trying to get kids out to go into like more field trips and stuff. We're trying to make it like a fun environment, not having like a homework base. So I know like after-school, they're really like exhausted. So we plan all these activities for kids, and I guess that really attracted them as well. And we try to, for me, they're more than just the students, like my kids, pretty much. So, yeah.
It's nice to hear that.
Any other questions from this as well? Any other questions?
I have a question, so I do want to add that we did have, we do have a few families whose children are led to stay, leave the program. Actually, there are several families who do not have the need for the program, but they are happy to leave their children in the program and pay for our services because the children are excited and they don't want to go home. So that has been very rewarding. They have many fun activities. And the families have come to the office to share their appreciation and their gratitude towards the staff and the services we provide. We have our PE teacher who has joined us back again. So adding that physical activity on top of everything that we're doing has really added value to the program. So that has been great to see families utilizing the program even though they don't really need it.
And also, thanks to like our amazing staff guys as well. They're really supportive and the kids love them, so.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to discussion items, 6.1. What we, we're gonna, okay, so we don't have some here from Pro CC, so I'd like to. Motion to move to postpone to the next meeting. Very well. May I get a second? Second. All those in favor? Aye. Let's move on to administration, 7.1, enrollment and attendance update. We have an attachment with all the updates for everyone.
There is an attachment with the information, 7.1, 2, 3, and 4. I'll give you a minute so you can read it. I want to just briefly touch on the different ones, and then if you have questions, go ahead and ask. We have had a lot of students out sick. There was one day when we had 35 students out sick at the same time, the same day. So that was really difficult. We did call every family, every parent to ask what had happened, why the student was not here. And it was reported to us that they were out with the flu. We did have a couple of them critically ill at Stanford and at Memorial, Memorial Hospital. So we know that they have been seriously out sick. And that has continued to be the case with a lot of flu and sickness. We have sent children home with fever and stomach aches and other flu symptoms. So we asked the families to keep it home if they're sick, so they don't spread the virus around. So that has been difficult for us. Sorry, Academy is being offered as well as, there's February 16th, there's a professional development day for the staff. So we're going to offer that day as a makeup day for any child that has missed a school day. So they can make up, they can only make up one day, one absent day for every day. So there was the idea of possibly doing it during Wednesdays when it's minimum day, and we're not allowed to because it's the same day. So no minimum day. We can only do it on an off day, such as Saturday or a PT day. We're also looking into to make up, I lost the idea, spring break, the first week of spring break. Hopefully, we can offer the first four or five days recruiting brave staff members who want to work an extra week. I have a couple of committed ones, but I need at least four or five. So, and I'll get a lot more to your count later as we get closer to spring break. 7.2, architect proposals. Oh, any questions on board about 7.1? 7.2, and again, we can come back to it if you have any questions. Architect proposals, there were four architect firms that came to visit our site and to give us a proposal to replace our place structure. And there was two companies that declined to submit a proposal, so we only had two. Out of those two proposals, we had the contrast committee meet, and they selected one architect for, to propose to the board for approval. And that happened on Monday, the 22nd of January. And a staff and family survey was distributed via ParentSquare and via Google Forms to the parents via ParentSquare, to the, and using SurveyMonkey, and to the staff via Google Forms. And this was asking them for pros and cons to getting or to having our own transportation, asking them if they were supported, asking them if there's still any value or benefit, any academic value or benefit. And so far, we have 54 families who have responded and 21 staff members. So we'll close that window by the end of this month and gather all that information to take into consideration when providing information to the board. I have started the transportation cost analysis. We have rented vans, super vans, for one field trip for upper grade. And we have an estimated cost of what it would cost to go to the Pinnacles. It was at Pinnacles, Pinnacles. And so we also have estimated cost for the Discovery buses to go to San Francisco. And we also have estimated cost for the city of Selina's elementary transportation cost. And so now, we just got to put it all together and do a cost analysis. And we have taken into consideration when looking at this maintenance, registration, gas, and everything else that comes with owning your own transportation and storage, of course, which we still have to look into how much it would cost to store in a place nearby.
Will we have that report by the next?
I was hoping to have it by today, and I was distracted, so by the next meeting, yes, for sure. I have it all, I have it, I just got to put it all together.
Okay.
Right now, it's not in one, this format to show it to you.
Are there any comments or questions from the public on any of these items?
The passenger vans, if you guys do purchase them, do they have to, do drivers have to have a special license? Because I know from working with church groups that sometimes they had to get a Class C, I think, license.
Yeah, I believe the ones that.
The answer is no. They do not need a special driver's license, I did ask, and the answer was no.
Thank you.
I think there are 10 passenger vans, so the 12 and above are the ones that we need to have a special.
Are you going to have, is it going to be volunteer drivers or is it going to be somebody you hire to drive?
We haven't decided that at this point. We're not there yet. Although, most likely, we are our own staff members as well as families who are currently, have our fingerprinted, have our registered license with us, just like what they do now. That they have it on file with us. So the answer would be most likely, but we don't have all the details yet to do.
And I'd just like to express my concern that $200,000 on passenger vans, not to mention licensing, maintenance, storage, upkeep, you know, any possible liability at Oasis, could probably be spent more wisely other places also. I noticed in your transportation analysis, we didn't ask our sponsoring district, Alisal, for cost analysis. So I don't know if that's a possibility, that you guys could ask Alisal what the possibility, if they have passenger vans or even the use of their buses, that that would be a possibility. Especially considering our education is so low. You know, we could even consider giving teachers raises or staff raises or supplies. Or, you know, one parent had mentioned tablets for kids. You know, and we're going to this electronic version for parents. I know some districts, actually, Alisal District also offers tablets for their kids. So that's just a suggestion.
Thank you for your comments. Let's move on to, to our unfinished business, action items and resolutions. We have several items here. We'll go through each one of them. Our first one is the appointment of UCM board secretary. We asked our board member, Laura Lopez, if she was interested in becoming the board secretary. She agreed to it, so now we have to have the motion and get that approved to officially put her on the books. So I'd like to entertain a motion to recommend board member Laura Lopez as a UCM board secretary up until her term is up. So.
I move that we recommend Laura Lopez as our board secretary.
May I get a second?
Thanks.
Okay. I've moved it seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions? Laura, you can't oppose yourself. And we'll move you. That was joking, but welcome as a board secretary. We don't have pork here, so I want to probably postpone that item until he's present and then he agrees to move forward with that nomination. So can I get a motion to postpone item 8.2?
I move to postpone item 8.2.
Thank you. May I have a second from someone? Second from Laura. I'll move forward to postponing 8.2 to the next board meeting.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We just heard, so 8.3 is, we just heard our auditing firm provide us an audit, an independent audit report, and we need to approve it now. So if I can entertain a motion for that from someone?
I move to accept a report from Clifton Larson Allen LLP.
May I get a second from someone? Okay, second if I, Laura Lopez, all those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes the man's lead, thank you. 8.4, English Development, English Language Development Master Plan.
I have, I just want to ask if we could add, just the D-LAC also approved this plan. And so if we could just add here. this plan, and so if we could just add here, uh, along with prepared, presented by Sabrina Bo from American Partners Associate and OS Administration, uh, be the D-LAC as well, so we can add D-LAC as one of the groups that approved this plan and has given us input. That is D-E-L-A-C, D-LAC.
Can I get a motion to add D-LAC onto that item, um, of the list of approvers or that, or reviewers? Okay, Nora, um, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor to add, D-LAC is one of the groups who reviewed, um, the English Language Development Master Plan.
Aye.
Okay. So now, um, Mike, can we get an overview of that, um, before?
Yes. The English Language Development Master Plan, uh, was originally, is originally part of our charter, and so elements of that were extracted. And then we also included some of our forms, uh, some of the process that we have for reclassification, so we included that in there as well. Uh, also, as part of this was the school single plan for student achievement, elements of that were extracted. So off of the school single plan and the charter and our reclassification criteria, you put it all together and you create a, an English Language Development Master Plan. And that has to do with specifically enmity services, programs, uh, for ill, uh, English language learners and for, and parents, so.
Um, are there any comments from the board?
Just a quick question. Dr. Bob, what, oh, is the same person who's been a couple of years ago, came by, uh, to school from Los Angeles, and other? So she's like, you know...
She's there, so we don't start to go back.
Okay. Any other comments from the board, um, questions to the board on that? Okay, so Mr. Sandoval?
Yes, thank you. I'm a member of the D-LAC, uh, voting member of the D-LAC, and I'd just like to express my concerns. So our meetings have mostly been informational meetings, and we only have three meetings, uh, were scheduled. I know we're adding one more, but in our initial meeting, some of the things that I had requested for was, uh, we only, we see some of our documents in Spanish, considering this is English in the nurse committee, a lot of parents were Spanish-speaking only, and, uh, the first time we were provided some documents in Spanish, and I feel this is, I feel this is discrimination against Mexican people. Now, at the D-LAC committee, we actually were offered no documents in Spanish, um, and considering was, I was asked for it. Also, we've received no training. Um, after, uh, our first meeting, we requested training as specified in the D-LAC requirements of the CBE, um, and our next meeting is not skip, we're gonna have a discussion about training, but when all of the districts, including Alacel, are going to train, it's like coming, um, and we, we're not allowed to participate. So we're not gonna be able to have an impact as a D-LAC committee this year on anything, um, and I think that's very concerning. Um, simple things like notifying parents or making sure they're aware of their rights as parents, and, um, um, those things have not been addressed. And I, I have an email which you guys all have received that was sent out, um, three months ago, um, just asking us to inform our English learner parents of, uh, the benefits and some of the struggle, uh, downsides of, of their students possibly getting tracked in high school. And actually, um, from Dr. Perez's own comments, the damage that the English learning program can do if those kids aren't out by fourth or fifth grade. There was no clear plan in the D-LAC committee to give students an exit strategy, and, and, um, if we don't have a clear goal to get people out of that program, then they could be affected long-term. So we, we're just, you know, it has not been a, a productive meeting, and other schools have meetings monthly. We only have three planned meetings, meaning our English learners, I mean, how are we able to, to have an impact? Being part of the D-LAC committee, this has a lot of great goals to meet that, but part of being on the D-LAC committee is to, to, uh, allow parents and teachers and administrators to impact our English learners in a positive way, and that, that has not been achieved.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your comment.
I'd also like to comment, as an educator, it is a concern with, um, the ALD program is, I've found some students, and not just here, that are, because they don't realize when they fill out that form in kindergarten, um, that they could be in the English only, and maybe they're only, their grandparents speak Spanish. I've had this case with a tutoring kid who was in ELD for five years until he finally, his mom was very unaware, and I had to kind of explain to her, you need to try to get him reclassified, and he didn't speak any Spanish at all. And so those are the kind of downfalls of that program that parents are not aware of when they fill out that form in kindergarten. It is not clear when they mark that box that that is it for them, unless their kid can reclassify themselves by third or fourth grade. It affects them in junior high with electives and high school with electives. So I think parents need to be a little bit more educated on what that form means and how to fill it out correctly.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Great. Are there any questions from the board on the current plan? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move that the board accept the English Language Development Plan as prepared and presented.
Yes, I can. Seconded by Nora Lopez. All those in favor, present of, uh, including the plan as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously, thank you very much. Let's, uh, move on to eight point five, School Accountability Report Card for sixteen-seventeen. Uh, we have the document in front of us. This is based on last years. So, can we get just a quick rundown of what we're looking at?
Yes.
Thank you.
The School Accountability Report Card is a report of what happened during sixteen-seventeen. Also, it asks for some information, our plan for seventeen-eighteen. The, some of the national information specifically for, uh, specifications for pupil is for the year prior, for fourteen-fifteen, fourteen-fifteen. And that's how it's, uh, required to be reported. Uh, some of this information is downloaded directly from the CDE's website, so it's automatically entered, and some of this information we have to enter, and, uh, that is the report that is created. Uh, some of this information also is in LCAP, so we extract some, some information off of there.
And once it's approved here, it goes to...
Once it's approved, I upload it to the website, uh, the CDE's website by February first. And then we also post it on our website, OS's website.
Okay. Any questions from the board to move that?
This one I read from Moscow.
Thank you, Mike. Um, yeah, I'll entertain a motion to...
I move that we accept this SARC report.
May I get a second, please? Seconded by Nora Lopez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry. Let me retract that for now. This is coming from...
I, I just had a question about the teacher credentials, part of the SARC report. Does, does this report take into account to the teachers? Is this, is this for two thousand sixteen-seventeen taking into account to the teachers who started off as credentialed and then those were replaced with non-credentialed teachers? Or is this, is this number, uh, where it's, uh, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, where it says, um, without full credentials, it says three, but considering last year we had, uh, I don't know if it was two or three teachers that were replaced by eight with non-credentials, is that number reflected in there? Or is this only from the beginning of the year? And then my next question was just, um, the one that we got, teachers?
Yeah, to get that one out here.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
This is how we finish out the year. This information is end of the year.
Okay, and then you have another question?
Oh, yeah, and then, uh, which one it says that, uh, for the one that we were out of, uh, it says, uh, teaching outside subject area of competence with, with full credential. Uh, what, what number is that, or what does that refer to? The number one?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Is this on page seven?
It's on page seven, yes. There's one person who was, uh, for two years, uh, for two school years, says teaching outside subject area of competence.
Can you see it?
Okay, so it's page...
It's page seven under, uh, uh, teacher credentials, and it's the third, um, sub, or the three, the third item. So full credential, without full credential, and then teaching outside subject area of competence.
For sixteen-seventeen, it's, it's one. Is that the question?
No, the question is, what, what does that refer to? Which, what?
It refers, the teacher has a credential outside of that area, the, uh, outside of the credential that's required for that classroom.
No, I understand that, but like, more specifically, what was that situation regarding that?
Is a teacher who was in a classroom with a full credential, but the credential was not a multiple subject.
Oh, okay. And then there's two, uh, two, uh, teacher, total teacher misassignments for two thousand sixteen, what does that refer to?
It's a, uh, a teacher who has a, uh, who was spending, passing her exam for ELAs.
Oh, okay.
To, to teach ELAs.
Oh, I see it. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't read the notes. It says, uh, uh, the number of positions filled by teachers who lack legal authorization to teach the grade level subject area or student group, sorry, and, um, thank you.
Great. Okay, um, let me, let me, just for the record, have a re-vote on that, um, motion, if we can just take a motion and...
I move that we accept the SARC report as presented and send it along to the state.
Very well. And it was seconded by Nora Lopez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously, thank you. And, uh, eight point six, Professional Architect Contract for the New Base Structure. Uh, Director, Betty, I haven't mentioned that we had, um, architects come by and follow the, um, the plans, and so, um, the recommendation is to accept, um, a proposal from Pierre Casaban, the amount of thirteen, uh, one seven six. May I get a motion, please? Okay. Motion by Nora Lopez.
I'll second.
Seconded by, my heart. Um, all those in favor of approving that, um, recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
It's closed, and motion passes. Okay, let's move on to announcements, nine point one, the new family orientation will be February twenty-eighth. Uh, there's several dates actually for, on the orientations. Dr. Perez, would you like to comment on those?
The new family orientations will be on those dates. We're gonna start having our orientations on the dates noted. Uh, this is only for new families, not for new students. Uh, I can sometimes get families, current families, returning families of kindergarten students for the upcoming year, and this is only for new families to, uh, start getting applications for the lottery that happens sometime in April. So, uh, we have some advertisement out. I believe it's gonna start soon at TV as well as radio. So with that, we hope to attract as many families as we can so we can hold a lottery and hopefully have a healthy waitlist, uh, by the beginning of school year, like we did this past year.
Great, thank you. Um, nine point two, Saturday Academy.
We'll have two, uh, one starting on February third and the other one on sixteen. I, uh, whoops, I've asked the staff to volunteer, well, they get paid to volunteer their Saturday to do this. It's not easy after they have been teaching all, uh, week, uh, but I have some brave peoples at I, so they know how important it is. So we're gonna be offering two in February to make up for some of the ADA due to the flu and illness.
Okay, thank you for that, for those announcements. Um, do we have any future agenda items? Like, uh, the agenda, I mean, the numbers?
The, uh, cost analysis, the transportation cost analysis, I'll bring that up, please.
And then the postponed items as well?
And all those postponed items, yeah.
Okay, um, there's nothing else on our agenda, so I'm gonna call this meeting, um, at seven fifty-nine. Take care of your participation today, and have a good evening.